Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Northwest Mayor and Council for February 29, 2018 at 5:09 PM. Madam President, would you please give the floor?
Mayor Pranjak?
Here.
Counselperson Laversa, we need to call him in. Uh, can you do your mind?
Do you want me to just use my phone?
Yes. E. Park?
Here.
O.?
Here.
McMorris?
Here.
N. Park?
Here.
W.?
Here.
And municipal clerk?
Thank you. Who's rise for the class?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands:
One nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, would you please read the Open Public Meeting Act statement?
I put notice that this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and group reading by the municipal clerk.
Count motion to open to the public, please. Madam President? Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard? Please raise your hand, be recognized by me, into the microphone, say your name and address, and then you make your statement. Yes. And are you on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Mary O'Shea, twelve Irving Avenue. Um, I would ask you, please, all make sure the microphones are on because last time I was at the budget meeting here and I couldn't hear. Are the little... Is this one on? Light on?
They're on.
They're on? I couldn't hear. Okay. Uh, second of all, um, I was very disappointed at the last budget meeting that there was no Democrats in attendance. And the budget is one of the most important things that a councilperson has the responsibility of formulating. And not to be here for that meeting is a disgrace. And at least here's two here tonight and one on the phone better than last time, but you should be ashamed of yourself.
Okay, um, if you have trouble hearing us, Mrs. O'Shea, just raise your hand and I'll, I'll make sure we're speaking.
That's okay.
Okay, is there no one else wishing to be recognized? Count motion to open to the public, please.
Second of all.
Madam President?
Aye.
So we left off... Did everybody get the binders? Ed, do you have your binder in handy?
I, I do have drawing right now.
Okay. Um, it's gonna be hard for you to have a meeting following this meeting while you're driving. How long will you be driving for?
I'm not sure.
He has, he has this on his email.
Yeah. Okay, have you had the opportunity to review the binder, Councilman?
I did, I did look through it. But I'm sure I'll be fine.
Okay, um, did you pick it up from the burrow or did somebody bring it to you?
It was good to know. What'd you say?
No, but you have a binder.
It's a binder, it's different, yeah.
No, no, it was Zingo. Wasn't it nice work?
The same.
Do you also have a physical binder?
No, not on, no, Mary, I don't.
Okay. All right. Got it. Uh, so, the other thing I wanted to make sure we discussed is that there had been a meeting last Friday and, and so for the three councilmembers who are missing, please watch that video so that you can get up to speed on, on what we're working on, what's under this cover, uh, and what issues we have. I haven't, I personally have not gotten any subsequent comments back from any of the three people missing from the last meeting, like Councilwoman O., Councilwoman Park, and Councilwoman Laversa. I just need you to be more involved in the process. And I will have now the Finance Committee Chairperson Gloria O., um, walk us through the rest of the budget regarding, I believe, page six is where we got the...
Mayor, uh, with all the respect...
Hold on a second, is it the page six?
Um, it is page, uh, six, yes.
Do I have the floor now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not the finance chair that you keep messaging that I am. Okay? In case you did not read my email, here's a copy of it that I sent to you on Sunday, which you have responded.
No, I, I agree.
So you know that I'm not accepting it and you can't force this on me.
Well, not, it's not up to me to take it away from you.
Oh, really? So how was it taken away from, uh, Councilman Wu and how was it taken away from Council President?
There was a council vote appointing you as the chairperson of this committee, which is the Finance Committee, which is responsible for creating the budget.
You know, like, you can say whatever you want, all you want, but you're not following the protocol.
No, we are. We had a vote. Actually, it, it...
If I may, Mayor?
Yeah.
If I really may.
And by the way, I can't tell you what to do and how to do it. And I'm not your attorney.
There's never been a vote for a chair. There was never been a vote on her, on the head.
There was, yeah.
Now, for you to be the co-op, or, uh, the head of COA, you... There's never been a vote, ever. And now you're not being... You wanna say you appointed her, then you appointed her.
Relax.
Thank you. Um, I can, I know, and I can tell you what is disgusting, Councilwoman O. I have been doing borough business since nine...
You know what? If you didn't tell me that you put in forty to sixty hours, maybe, okay? You could save that because you already wrote that in the email. Okay? I understand how many hours you put in, okay?
Wait, I'm asking.
And you know what? What's good for you is not good for me and my party. That's not right.
She did not...
What you, what you do with your people, Mayor, okay? It's okay, but it doesn't work for me. If I don't want to accept it, then I don't...
You need to permit a person who has the floor...
If you wanna play this game, you can go on and we could spend hours playing this game.
It's not a game. Actually, what I wanted to do is work through the budget. It's not up to you to accept.
No, it is up to me because you don't... Two years ago, two years ago, when you first became mayor, the first time you tried to appoint me as a coach...
I'm gonna make a legion to a germ because I'm not gonna take this anymore.
I did not accept, and that was fine, but then... You can't change your rules as you go, okay?
We, we voted.
I know you're very new at this, Mayor. This is your third year. I understand. You know, you may have maybe one more year to go and that's it.
Are you finished?
You know what?
Are you finished?
You know what?
Do you wanna take a break? Do you wanna go outside? Do you wanna catch your breath? Do you wanna relax? Because you're not doing a very good job here of doing anything, including your duties as a councilperson, okay? So now, just don't speak while she's speaking, okay?
Counselman, Councilman, I had the floor.
Keep your eyes on the road. And I know this is an important meeting for you. Go ahead.
I had the floor. I...
All right.
Excuse me.
All right.
I had the floor, Councilman.
Carol has the floor right now. And you have the steering wheel. All right, keep driving.
May I please speak uninterrupted? Councilwoman?
So cynical.
May I have the floor? I gave you the respect that let you scream and yell. Enough.
I wanna get to this budget.
That's right. We have, we all have jobs to do. And please do not put myself in the same category as you. When you learn to doom your duties as a councilwoman, you can't, you can't get that right. Uh, uh, you know what? Yeah. So let me please finish. I don't think this is funny at all. You should be ashamed of yourselves for what you're doing. Now, Mayor, I wouldn't if she wouldn't have taken ten minutes to...
We have a budget.
That's right, okay. So, everybody has their job responsibilities, and we're gonna get through this budget and we're gonna get through every other item that we have to get through with our responsibilities. And I'm the only one that's sort of important today on the Ellen Park lawsuit, which will have an effect on this budget. You both need to stop playing games with the borough. I'm not gonna say this again.
Where are my emails?
We have COA and we have...
Give me the email, Carol.
You have everything you're supposed to have.
Your motion to...
I won.
I won. That's great. You know what? It's for more money.
You did.
And you don't want to go to the end.
You are a disgrace as a councilwoman. What you are doing to the...
You know what? When that all comes out, everything will come out.
You are a disgrace.
I have disgraced.
And so are you, Councilwoman O. Do your job.
It's the end of November. You know what? That's not right.
We are, we're out of the recess.
It's not for you to decide.
Two years over two, ready?
All right. So we're, we're back in session, everyone. We have a, a off-the-record discussion regarding responsibilities and everything. Look, for, for purposes of tonight, all I wanna do is go through the budget. Uh, I'll lead the discussion, uh, since, uh, Councilwoman O. has, uh, she doesn't wanna be the chairperson, although she is the chairperson, uh, and she'll continue to be the chairperson. Uh, there was a vote taken on Friday appointing her the chairperson. So I'm here to do a budget. I'm not here to listen to her. Well, she just, in case everybody didn't hear, she just threatened another lawsuit because we appointed her to do a...
You know what? We can't decide here. So you have to let the court decide, Mayor, okay? And this is what you do. You let people to the court, let the judge decide, okay?
All right, we're on page six. I know you're not on page six, but I'm on page six, and that's where we're gonna...
Did everyone get my response to the, um, question that we had at the last meeting regarding the building?
I got it, thank you.
Did you read it? I see you still have the two questions. Can I change the, uh, to, uh, the welcome corner?
Okay, so, here. For purposes of, I will help our Finance Committee Chairperson get through this in a collegial fashion, and we'll do the budget. So we're in, uh, account number nineteen fifty-two, construction code official. I think we had done some, was there anything open other than the things that were definitely corrected or changed?
Updated.
All right, updated. So page seven. Solar inspection is nineteen ninety-one. Fire prevention and, and, um, undermissed, and I shouldn't have done this earlier, a moment of silence, dark casino cardula, um, fire inspectors, lights passed to the right. Moment of silence, I didn't think you got it back there. Thank you. Thanks.
I just, I wanna say that Joe Cardulo with, he's been having a very rough time the last two months with his wife. His work has not stopped for the borough and is impeccable. And, uh, I think it was, uh, day before yesterday, even though she passed, he delivered all his files and work and everything is up to date for the borough. So he, he's a very responsible, uh, responsible person and I do thank him for that. Of course, we, uh, we sent something on, on behalf of...
The borough has sent...
Well, Mayor, yes.
Fire prevention nineteen ninety-one, basically no change from last year to this year. Nineteen ninety-two, uh, we've put a couple, um, a couple minor changes, nothing material.
I have a question.
What's your question?
Is it on page eight or seven?
Page seven.
Wait for the next one, next page. Regarding reinsurance.
Twenty twenty-two, electrical inspections. Really not much of a change there. On page eight, twenty, count twenty-one hundred, insurance. There are some changes here in the line item, well, the fire life insurance, uh, was eleven thousand dollars budgeted until two thousand seventeen, about fifty-five hundred, fifty-six hundred was expended in two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, and now it's going to be requested at six thousand. So that's more in line with what was actually done last year and that's what was budgeted. The, um, the line item twelve two fifty-five, access liability lawsuits, um, that number has changed. It's at, uh, two hundred thousand. Uh, last year, a hundred and twelve thousand was expended and then it probably was budgeted. That's something that is, uh, basically a line item that's not negotiable. This is what our insurance providers or pools, whatever they belong to, uh, in each instance, they take to us.
Is that enough? That's like, is it in our GIF, deductible double?
This is based on that.
What is due to them? Under fifty now, right? It used to be seventy-five.
This number was, um, discussed between the CFO and the administrator. They worked, they worked on the number together.
Uh, those numbers came from our CFO. If you have any questions, what you could do, start relying on them. You could email, uh, the CFO or email the clerk, and we'll get you another answer, but that's the number that we were giving. Going down on that same page, account twenty-two hundred, insurance, new insurance. Those are given. There's been some, some change in the majority health plan for retirees, it's not enough. So, um, th- those are all given and, and they're large numbers, right? So that, you know, account one sixty-two and one sixty-three are quite large, it's seven hundred fifty thousand each, those are the health plans that voids it for retirees. Really, that, that's something that we have...
I have a question. Line, uh, one sixty-three, why is it our, um, uh, plan for the...
Could you speak louder?
Mary, um, I'm trying my best.
Go ahead, just speak louder.
Okay.
You were loud before when you yelled at me. Just be a little...
You know what? I need that sort of person, okay? This is why I can't work with you. Line number one sixty-three.
Work at home.
I'm talking now, so, uh, if you could be quiet. Mary, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Line number one sixty-three, uh, New Jersey Health Plan for Retirees. Last year, it's, uh, it was six hundred and thirty thousand, and now for two thousand and eighteen, we're budgeting seven fifty. Any idea why it's going on?
I know of at least two additional retirees that we have for last year, and one this year for last year. And one was partial last year. Actually, both were partial last year. So, I mean, that, that's the consequence of retirees. So basically, if they didn't retire, they would have been in the other under our budget, right? I don't wanna identify who it is for... There were at least two people retired. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman O?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Going down, um... Police twenty-four oh one. I think what we should do on, on the twenty-four oh one items, um, because the chief of police cannot be here tonight, we, we should probably just skip over police. And we'll revisit that, uh, when we just went here. And that goes through page, um, through eleven. Oh, actually, no, it's like, through the middle of eleven. Fire starts at twenty-six fifty-one. Took that as a side note. Um, I, I followed up with the fire chief a few times regarding the new equipment, the new pumper truck that was acquired in early December, requiring when it will be put into service. And it's been somewhat delayed and I, I expressed that, you know, we appreciate everything that they do as a fire department and we appreciate that they all do to be safely trained to operate the new vehicle, but we're also paying for that vehicle. So I, to me, it bothers me when we have something new that's not being utilized for benefit of the borough. So, um, I, I think they're getting close to putting it into service. I asked by April one. I don't think it's gonna be by April one, although I can see them driving around us today with it.
It is insured.
It's insured, yes. So it's been, um, you know, the financial obligations of the borough for that vehicle have always been satisfied and, uh, you know, I'm looking forward to it being put into service just so we get the benefit of that. But I need the, uh, the day-to-day operations of the fire chief, of course, so he'll, he'll let us know when it's ready. I don't know if there's any questions on anything else in that budget regarding fire. Don't know if there is. Everybody good on fire? Uh, roads and repair are next. Yeah, so we did, well, we had to get the head and the, we should all let him watch the video.
With Mark, just a...
And Mark now, but, uh, it's kind of...
We did, uh, we left off that, um, we're up to, uh, page sixteen.
So Shade Tree, I'm gonna have that account, three one three one.
So on one forty-three, why are they requesting so much money? Forty-three thousand and one hundred for twenty eighteen, when it was zero expended and we have twenty thousand?
Was that for Shade Tree maintenance?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, I'll go get me a support. Or do me a favor, after this meeting, send me an email.
I believe I have, um, I wish that the, uh, the categories were...
They moved around.
They moved around. It really wasn't a zero because it was being charged Shade Tree Maintenance and Removal of Trees, and there was one other, um, that really is the same thing. So they were not, they were putting it all into one, see, they see Removal of Trees, or they went over the sixteen. So that's why you see a zero in the Shade Tree Maintenance, I think. They were looking at really consolidating those lines into one. Um, but I, I know we spoke briefly when Catherine was here about, she wanted to leave a five-year track record. That's why they don't like to take the, the lines out.
Right, so you can't research them.
Right. And then, um, also, this year specifically, that the Shade Tree has a lot of work to do. I know that there was a specific, um, Catherine's a lot very much, but specific requests that were put in by the Shade Tree.
I know that's what she said, right? I'll see if they collapse any of the accounts here.
No, they didn't collapse it because she didn't want Catherine.
There's still numbers in the law, and I was still hoping...
Yeah, we have to leave her there.
You can't leave numbers in...
It's like fifty thousand dollars from what's actually expended from March.
So, Ellen, if you can, just a reminder, send us an email so we can follow up on that.
Where do you want me to send it?
Send it to Catherine.
And me.
Yeah.
I wanna get your hands on it. It is a good question. Anything else on Shade Tree? Uh, next account is three seven three two, Senior Citizens Committee.
No, you have to go on.
Pages stuck together, sorry. Three one three five, the next one, Environmental Commission.
Yeah. Uh, we have a volunteer, Yang Chang, that drives around town. We didn't approve it, we denied it, but he put in a voucher, and I can't tell you how much it was for, for mileage, driving around town.
You needed that one before.
Um, it was denied.
Yeah.
I need to know if this is something the governing body would approve because he doesn't, he doesn't get paid. I'm not recommending it, I'm not, not recommending it. I'm just asking, um, I think you, I'd be guessing if I told you how much it was, maybe two hundred dollars for the year, driving around town, inspections as a volunteer. I don't know how everyone feels about it.
I think it was more of the, uh, setting, setting standards and then everybody would be putting in for mileage.
Well, those are...
I think that, I would talk to Catherine about that.
Same thing. She said it, I just think that it would have to be a question, uh, up to the government. I mean, not, we're not comparing it to the inspector.
No, no, I get that.
He actually, you know, drives around, uh, now.
Yeah, I don't believe she would have...
Do you have an iPhone that he can use?
And you know what? He, I know I called him on the weekend because somebody just cut him down.
If you wanna put maximum, maximum.
That might be a lot, but would you be in favor of...
As long as you put a maximum on it.
Maximum, all right. By the way, so let me email the voucher. Not, I, I just, it wasn't approved. And you could see the amount and decide on how that...
That sounds...
And then depending on what that number is, is that right?
Yeah, which was coming in.
Yeah. Yeah. No, no, no. Yeah, I said something. I turned him down, but...
So Board of Health, three three zero one. Three three zero two. Page eighteen. Senior Citizens Committee. There are two items there. We're, we're actually looking at you doing something different than the, well, maybe in addition to our behalf here, in terms of a bus, um, being acquired. Catherine was looking into that. I need to follow up. Sorry, did you hear me?
She can't hear you.
Sorry. So all I said was on Senior Citizens Committee, we're actually looking into acquiring a bus for the senior citizens, as we discussed.
Right.
And Catherine was looking into different options and different prices and costs. I, I haven't heard back from her yet, and we need to talk to her about that.
I have a final question, okay? If zero dollars was budgeted for trips, but we spent thirteen thousand on twenty seventeen, where does that money come from if we didn't budget it?
I, I think if you look above...
It came out of the taxi service?
Yeah, because the, the overall number was still less than what was budgeted. I think they reallocated that.
That's money that we give to seniors every year.
So does that apply for all groupings then underneath?
Everything for seniors.
Right now, saying for all the other categories as well? Like, for instance, it...
Throughout the year, sometimes we take appropriations or positive amounts and, and we, we have accounts that are voted on, things that we move around.
Right. But that's what we do with seniors.
Right. She's talking about other...
Like, like Shade Tree, like, there's, you know, a big jump, I was saying, I was gonna email, I'm gonna email tomorrow, but I guess if we don't spend money on one section, it gets reallocated to another area.
At the end, the CFO makes that decision. If he sees that it's money that are not gonna be spent...
Right.
It's his decision as to where it's needed the best.
And there's a resolution.
Right. But can you take the money left over from Shade Tree and spend it, let's say, on another area?
As long as it's not, uh, the Shade Tree Fund. I know there's an actual, uh, trust.
Trust.
Right. If it's in the trust, no, it can't be moved.
So non-trust money.
Yeah.
Or non-trust money. But we do it by resolution, Councilman.
We just, yeah, we did one two months ago.
Parks and Parks Act.
You want that fixed? Recreation Director, line number three twelve. So it was budgeted for fifty last year, we extended fifty-six thousand, why? So I'm saying, I don't know.
Send me an email, we'll follow up on that.
And we're also budgeting a thousand dollars more this year, so I guess, is that like an increase or...
Well, that's for the bunch, for the committee to vote. Catherine put a two percent raise. Of course, the board for everyone, the council's gonna have to have a discussion as to whether or not they want to...
And there's an allocation issue because Assistant Recreation Director was employed in the study, she was zero. Next one, so, I'm kinda like...
Well, he definitely, he was, yeah, he was paid, but, but that, that shouldn't be zero. They pay you right now.
Right.
I think the Williams point was combined, three twelve. Although it's still less than the budget of...[1760.36]
Oh, yeah, because he didn't start in January first.
February or March.
Oh, yeah, one or the other, that's right, good point, maybe he, they might have put it all into the one.
So the total of three twelve and three thirteen last year, I'm sure it's still less than what was budgeted.
If you see it in the...
So for the trips and some of these numbers that are expanded, I'm just curious to know, probably from, first of all, their whole number, so thirteen thousand, trips is exactly thirteen thousand.
No, let me, yeah, let me explain what that is. So every month, the seniors get a thousand dollars from us, instead twice a month, they get, twice a year, they get fifteen hundred dollars. That's just a given, they get that check.
So it's not thirteen thousand.
So they might have more left over.
No, 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 it's, no, no, it's, we give them that check.
And they, they do what they wish.
Yeah.
Right, so that check would be with the, if there was any.
Right.
Yeah, so they, there's a treasurer, in the senior citizens committee, and they have, so along the same lines, all the recreation lines, like some, uh, yield of destruction, those are just all paid out, full, the whole number.
That's a stipend number, like what they get paid to, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Anything else on the Parks and...
I think we might want to check on the community pass. It's, uh, I know we had a one-time fee, and a licensing fee, it might just be a licensing fee for two thousand and eighteen, we budgeted seven thousand.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
So it might be, it might be a bit high.
Okay.
The number of years too high?
Yeah, because the first year was the high, Williams right on that, paying the higher number the first year, the setup and all that. Second year shouldn't be as high.
I have a question about these two programs, Korean folk, then seeing in golf, golf. So we had budgeted money, but we didn't expand it, so I guess we didn't do those programs, right? Korean dance and golf.
They, I don't know, but they keep golf for us.
I only know golf from the school, and obviously this isn't it, so I can't answer that, but I'll find out.
Even though they didn't, yeah, I know that for our, and again, I'm not a CFO, so I don't know how he switches things around, but from one of these programs, I believe that is how we had the excess money to do our Winter Wonderland, the extra activities at the Winter Wonderland. I believe they pulled it from somewhere in one of the recreational programs, that was Catherine, Assistant Missouri. I can't give specific details, but I'm sure they'll be able to.
Much to do.
You, you, sir.
My question is, we, such as martial arts, I think students, they are paying some sort of a cure, right?
Right, the programs aren't free, there's registration in all our programs.
So one of these, our body is actually repaid for the dissum, from the disparted money, or?
It's not enough?
Not enough.
Some of these are also contracted?
Yeah.
Not with that, we're going to get it, we're going to pay it out.
See, how a budget works is, you can't, Mark, if you don't put the money in the line item, then you can't have the program. So unless you have a trust, a specific trust, set up for the program, and pay it out of the trust, then we have to fund it to, and then when the money comes back in, unfortunately, it goes back into the pot. Which is what Catherine explained on Friday.
So maybe these two areas, this new program and this areas, which is not specific as to what it is exactly, so.
New programs?
I think they're, I think that they're thinking to see what actually they make up.
Right, exactly.
Like, for instance, I had a discussion about wrestling. So if we take on wrestling, the money would come out of there.
Andy, do you have any questions? Are you still driving?
I'm still driving.
I have, um...
I hear a dog.
She's in a car.
Does she drive?
Dog's driving.
I wish the dog could drive, it takes a lot of thought off my mind.
Take a look at the budget.
I have, before we continue, can I, I have a quick question on the collection of taxes, question up to page three. It's the online payments, is that the new program, like where I guess we can just pay it online?
For three ninety-two?
Yeah.
Yeah. That is a charge, I took my notes, it's a one-time thing.
Yeah.
It's a company for the tax program.
Yeah.
And the other one...
So what, do they just set it up so that we can, I guess for three thousand, is it that they set up the website and the payment?
You know what, I got it, I got it. I'm trying to run the budget in order, that was all answered in the video that you're going to watch.
Okay.
I'm on page...
We can go back to that at the end, sure.
But it's not a budget, it's not, I'll have a separate, I'll, I'll leave on you. It's just a matter of the...
I refuse to repeat things that we discussed, okay?
Well, it's not a budget question, it's more of a...
We talked all about that.
No, it's not about the money, it's about how it all works.
We talked about this, we talked about that.
Okay, but...
It's in the video.
I'll answer you, that's fine, I'll answer.
Yeah, I just don't want to waste time.
That's fine, I'll answer it.
Three seven five two, Parks and Recreation, Parks and Parks fifteen, anything else? On page nineteen?
Page nineteen, no, eighteen.
Well, anything else on eighteen?
We've talked, oh, jeez, we've talked constantly about the actual field maintenance for the, for, for W E D, I'm just trying to do that. Anyone else on that one?
Field maintenance?
That's back there.
But, yeah, that was...
That's in D W.
Yeah, so, um, you know, Mark indicated that that number represents the field maintenance minus what many of you pay themselves. So the rest of the...
Now, it's on the subject of recreation, you want me to talk about that now? It's not on that page, though, but it's on the subject of recreation. When I went to the, um, when I went to the championship basketball game on Saturday, I was approached by many of the parents about the fact that the scoreboards don't, do not work in a school. Technically, I understand that they're in a school, but it's, they're all programs, we run the programs, and we work together in tandem with the schools to run the programs. I, I do not think that it's fair to put that burden on the school budget. I think that that's a capital improvement. I have collected, I, I asked Ms. Brower to contact me, she did yesterday, she was working with one of the parents, they got three quotes so far, I wrote four, have a chance to get them over there, but I wrote four of them, I think we can put it into our capital budget. It's for two scoreboards. I have to tell you, I was there at the game, they were one point apart, and the lights didn't work, so you could not tell who, thank God, they got an extra basket, so that there was not going to be any, you know, misunderstanding. No, they tried, they tried to get an electrical circuit board, it's going to cost almost half the amount of money, at this point, the both sets aren't working, the lights, okay, so I'm there, I recommend the council, put it in capital.
Let's get the numbers.
Yeah, I have it all forward, and she can forward it to the whole council.
We'll look at it, put it in capital.
Put it in capital.
Can I also see if the county, if the county has, if the county has agreement with any of the scoreboards?
Yeah, I just want to plan for it, because it, you know, it's a reflection of us as well, and we need the help, so, thank you.
Page nineteen. Library Services, Commonwealth, Valley of the East.
For the library, I have a question. Do we have any idea how many residents are using the library?
There's a report provided for the library.
I'll ask. It's long.
What, the report?
Yeah, let me see if I can get it, I'm very kind of, yeah.
I think there is one, yeah.
There is, we couldn't get one from anyone. A paralegal, paralegal.
I will find out, I'll find out.
I will say there are residents, I see.
And they were, at that last meeting, the councilman from Fort Lee said that they were putting the money from, that we were paying, to really good use in improving a lot of the sections of the library that everybody was utilizing.
Yeah, so you have to wait for, for a while.
Oh, if they have.
Yeah.
David, not here today, not really here.
And we're assuming this money isn't going to go away?
Not sure.
Yeah, well, we, we needed to increase forty-two twelve, you can see how that number will be over. See, that's sixteen, seven, five, nine? So I don't know where they, they took that extra six thousand dollars from one of those other lineup, line items, that we saw a zero in, in one of those other categories, Ellen, that you were asking about, that's where they, they take it from. So this year, we're allocating. See that?
That was the one.
Yeah, that definitely up to...
I wish we could move that to another area, it's just a little cramped, and everybody, I feel like there'd be more people coming, like for this year, could move it to a, you know, a bigger area. I don't know.
Well, we'll look at that. I can get it right. Okay, David, how does it look? Forty-five hundred. So forty-five hundred accumulated expenses. Forty-six hundred reserved for tax fields. I have to check that.
A huge number, a huge number.
I have to check that. I think there's something coming.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it actually might not be enough, I guess.
So increasing?
Well, yeah, you have to check that. Ed, you on?
Yes, sir.
We're on street lighting, so we'll make sure that you're on.
As long as the lights are all good.
Well, they're getting expensive, actually, you sure we need all?
Maybe you should, maybe you, you want a couple on every other block.
We'll start with your block, how's that? All right, so, pretty much, no change in budget, but it was actually less expensive. P S E N G is supposed to be rolling out LED street lighting, which would be across eighty-five driving, so I think it's supposed to start at the end of this year, beginning of next year, where the, the poles will remain, but instead of changing the high-pressure sodium light bulbs, when they, when they burn out, they're going to replace the entire head with an LED head, which will cut down, I think, usage significantly, I've heard different numbers, going up to like seventy percent, so.
But we won't see that this year, for your...
No, we won't see it this year.
Twenty nineteen.
We'll see it next year.
Yeah.
And the year after, the year after that, hopefully.
Right.
So that's, that's all for street lighting, thank you, Ed. One four zero two, telephone and fax. That's, it looks like we're...
We're saving money because I did switch a few things around with the phone company last year, and did get better pricing.
Okay, it looks like what the last year was, you had two one.
Mm-hmm.
One and a half.
Yeah, I had that.
Last meeting I mentioned, last meeting I mentioned to you, we changed about the telephone system, gas, deep phone system, we saved a lot of money, so.
It's not the, no, it's not the, it's a system, it's the screen service.
Yeah, yes, service is an internet provider company, but this is not a, you know, a telephone company, that is, our system, utilizing our internet line, and then we can save a lot of money, so that's what we do.
We have, uh, voice over, yeah, it's visual.
Voice over, yeah. Voice over, I think it's...
Right.
It's voice over.
It's voice over, something, do you do?
So how many lines do we have?
How many lines?
Does this cover the E D L?
Everything, everything, yeah.
Because, yeah, Mark's mentioning, you know, those two companies have a great section, it's just, yeah, different, it's an extension, and it could be in different places, physically here and then D W, so just curious how much, forty-nine thousand dollars is four thousand a month, roughly, for, I don't know how many lines.
But it's going to probably be the internet provider, plus the landline, which is no longer a landline, it's going to be cable, right?
It's just the internet.
Right, but then, but then if they don't provide the service, in other words, you can only get Spectrum or Verizon, which is a DSL, like there are certain, you can only get that angle, like you can't get Firelos, you can't get AT&T, you can't, so we're very limited as to what we can get as a cable network in order to use a telephone. Telephone is never like a ring style anymore, unless you have a fax, dedicated fax line, like for the office and stuff, so, like what you're talking about, is you still need a cable company in order to ring that service in, in order to do the telephone, is my point.
The company that monitors, and like I said, we did all the numbers for us, is Rite, even though it's Verizon.
You are using Verizon right now?
Horizon.
Horizon. Horizon, she's saying.
Horizon, you mean the Verizon, right?
Horizon.
H, H O R.
H O R, yeah, Horizon.
I think they lost that.
It's almost, a few thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars.
But forget the rest, nine seven.
Yeah.
But that's, I think, a lot, because I took on the system with three, but we did it to the same, the same...
Edit that out first.
Okay.
It was good, so, we, I, what we're doing...
I'll go then, sir. I'll go then, sir.
Yeah, Mark, what we can do is get you...
We can save money, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go then.
Yeah, because police might require a copper wire, right?
They probably have.
So, police, it's the fifty thousand, that is the problem, we save on. Thank you, thank you, Mark. So the next one, four five five zero, B C U A, I believe that's next up, Attorney. Those are dictated charges, we have three holders and other people in charge of this, so it is what it is.
We did get a bill from town, so that may be an exact number. I'm trying to think, anyone else coming in?
Why are our sewer charges, so, where did it go up, and we only expended two thousand and twenty seventeen?
I think she was saying that the, the actual bill didn't come in yet, that's why it could be... Not right, but that's why it's like that.
I see.
So they're, if they've had, okay.
I have no.
She thinks town files is exact.
Okay.
We probably, when do we usually get angles?
I'll call them, town file is great. I gave one call and they sent it over right away. I'll, again, that one.
Water, four five five two. Budget amount is the same as last year, spent amount last year was less than the budget amount. Four six zero two, electricity, heating. Was actually there a long-term supply contract for electricity, or are we set the price inspired?
Um, it is through, it's through a group, and I can't remember the name of the group. You know, it's through the New Jersey Mall, they, I could be wrong with the name, they go out and bid for a few towns, and we are one of those towns.
And when was the last time you actually set that price?
This year.
First, this year, we have the, that, um...
We don't do it, they do it for us, for part of time, I could send it to you.
So in terms of the actual ordinance that passes on the council, it's handled by this company, or is there actually...
Which ordinance?
Is, is there an ordinance, from when we go out with it?
We, we don't go out and bid the company, and again, I apologize, I don't remember the name of it, um, does this for us, and there's a few towns that are involved. It's like, for instance, it's like the Riverside, the roads.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's part of the mountain, does it?
There could be some sayings there, but I don't, I don't, yeah, you're fine, thank you.
It is less. I won't lie to you, that it is less.
Okay, on page twenty-two, account four-seven-one-zero, public employee procurement system. That is, uh, the number that we're given. The number we're giving for two thousand eighteen is one hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred ten dollars. The next one with the number in it is four-seven-two-zero, social security system. That's also a function of other governments and others. I'm thinking that whole page is pretty much given to us. What's DCRP?
I was just gonna ask.
I don't know what DCRP is.
What am I, what?
Oh. Forty-seven-eighty, what is DCRP?
What is this, the, um, all the ladies are great. There's a, it's a reserve for, you know, you have. Mati, yeah.
I don't know anything.
I'm gonna go.
Special Cyprus, there's a bit of government treasury, defined contribution retirement program, DCRP.
Is it?
Defined contribution.
Do you want the matrix?
No, no.
What does that, I mean, you want to show that's been in?
You can show that. Well, it fits this section heading, and, um, I, I think we probably don't have defined, well, I don't speculate, but that's what it is.
Defined contribution retirement program?
Defined contribution retirement. Program.
Okay, but what does that mean? I mean, I don't even know.
Defined contribution, uh, to cover the savings as such as a summer, but you know, employees want to retire, so can aging, it means a guarantee of, of key life. So, you know, monthly, you know, pay to, so I don't.
That's not enough. I wouldn't say I'm open to be on the planned contribution.
No, I, I think, I, I think what might happen here is this might be for boys from a long time ago, but you're not really using that program anymore, or just.
Go find out.
Go find out.
Go find out, yeah.
Yeah. For, like, the, 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 the.
One, it looks like one here.
It's a, it's a, we may try focusing on using this kind of system for, you know, the.
Okay.
So, if you want, what we could do is, if, we, we could come back to, to the inside of, where, uh, we have our CFO with us.
Mm-hmm.
We could hold, um, so, page forty-two. I'll, I'll put Chris's name next to it, so Chris will be on the forty-seven-eighty, um, um.
The next one, too, like, most of.
All the way through, um, two thousand. Well, Chris, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
And then, um, BEA funds, that's the amount, municipal court, one-nine-zero-one.
Okay.
No, I haven't changed there. Although, I was provided with, um, a proposal from the court clerk regarding e-ticketing for these officers, to, to have e-ticketing rather than having to write tickets where, you know, people can't read, please spend more time out of the car, it's more dangerous for them. Um, they could just do e-ticketing. They won't get scripted out in the car. It'd be forever. Get scanned with a ticket, uh, and it's, it's just a better way of information moving around also. So, there's a couple of different systems. I actually stopped in here, Mom, like, after court, and I was speaking to the offices. We're here also, the judge, and everybody there, proponents of doing that, uh, including officers. So, we're looking into that, and like anything, there'll be a setup cost, but I think overall it'll be cost saving. Municipal court continues.
Defined contribution is kind of the plan.
Corner of the yard two is the municipal court. Anybody have any questions here? Prosecutor, public defender.
I have a question.
What's your question?
Is the public defender making more money than the prosecutor?
I thought it was changed.
It's all changed.
It was changed. That's gonna be fixed. Thank you, Ellen.
That was changed recently.
This, yeah, that was, that's gotta be fixed. We've all voted on that.
Yeah.
Really, you're quite.
That was one of those.
Yeah, no, that was. Employees that make more than five thousand but don't meet the criteria of first.
Oh, that's what that program is?
The defined contribution. The defined contribution retirement plan is for employees that make more than five thousand but don't meet the criteria of first.
So, he has one person, looks like, that amount.
Okay. Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. On first.
Yes.
Uh, Von Prin, well, I haven't come in and deal with the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Most I don't think.
Plus, I don't think these numbers are accurate. The prosecutor went.
No, they, they, they fixed, yeah, we did. She made it over there.
Von Prin, principal, Von Prin, principal, Chris on Von, this is Von.
Well, this is all some Chris has to explain.
I'm gonna have Chris's name here.
And I think that these numbers are the, uh, specific numbers, not, right?
Is there a function of what's outstanding or if.
Yeah.
Probably not what's outstanding.
We should go to a fourth and one of those.
We need to be paid that. So, we're, we're getting into the CSL items on page twenty-six again.
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing on CSL. So, we.
We can go to cap.
Uh, we do that.
Cap.
I don't know if they have that. Do you have any?
We still have it in the book. In the side of the book.
I wasn't getting to me the.
No.
I made a note.
Yeah, you know what, would you, well, two second here. Let's just go. Hey, go, go talking. Who else? Who has one? Are you, I'm gonna use it. Willing, you have one?
Well, Ed doesn't have one, he's not, so, no, we can't do it. Ed's not.
I think the picture I can do.
Yeah, but, well, we're all together right now. Let's keep yours.
Keep yours.
No, okay, I know. The rest of us are here.
You have notes. Keep yours. Ned, or yours, and then, and go talking. I'll be right back.
Okay, uh, so, the first item.
I know, but I read this. Share with, should we see?
Two questions.
Yeah.
Let's, let's set aside cases of fire for now.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna do those together. So, administration, um, the ten thousand dollars for HVAC, um, is eight thousand dollars. Well, here's the thing, I don't know what the genesis of the ten thousand is or what it means, so.
Which one?
HVAC for administration. Need somebody from administration to explain that.
Well, what she's explained on Friday was that the air conditioning system is not working properly in the forty-two Hudson.
What's that?
Usually that evaluations of cost of repair, looks.
Right, that's what, we, we, they had all the repairs last year.
Uh, is this permanent or?
Well, it's, it's what's necessary for that building. It's what Catherine has. That was my understanding. Now, did they get different quotes on it or what? I have no idea, but that's, that's what that's for. Because it was not functioning properly.
This was there at the seven one one, something.
Correct.
All right, I don't have any information.
Yeah, I don't know yet. I don't know how many quotes came in.
All right, so, we need to talk to.
Mm-hmm.
Winmeyer clock, eight thousand dollars. Got a punch up?
Uh.
I, yeah, well, I can tell you right now, they either, what they don't have a, what they don't have a, well, is a clock. Which is really mandatory. You need one for elections because, okay.
Punch five.
When you, when you're bringing in paperwork, you can't just have a stamp where you're putting it. No, we don't have one. They do not have a, a time to the second of a clock.
When you get the RFQ, then, we do not have one.
Well, let's ask the person who would get it.
Williams, was that, we do not, is that not correct? We do not have a clock where you stamp things.
We had one. It's just Catherine hasn't put it into effect yet.
No, no, we don't have a clock. She didn't buy it.
Wait, what, let me back up. What?
I know I saw it.
Where you.
Yeah.
Uh, and point.
No, no, no. Like, when you get, like, RFQs, for example, do you have to timestamp them?
You have to.
I stamp them.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Uh, no.
We don't have one. Right.
I just got received at one time.
Well, we need one for elections. We are required to have, according to Catherine, we're required to have a clock that.
You.
That's what she said.
I don't.
Let's go.
That is this one. We require a attendance clock. It would seem.
Any, everyone has one?
Not that.
That is Catherine's recommendation that Carol needs to have.
Yeah, that's.
We do not have.
The only thing that I get, the only thing I get for, for election.
We need one. We need one.
I don't think it's.
So, there's the clock, which we could have more discussion on.
Nothing like to check the prices on one, I don't know, but that's the essence of what it is that you need. You cannot have a stamp that you can manually change the number on to stamp things when they come in.
It's as easy as something like that, with a program on it, and create the mark to scan.
I don't know what the requirements are from municipality, you know.
What do you, what do you think is being changed? What, what?
No, they're asking what is the definition of a Winmeyer clock.
Unless it's an acquirement.
Yeah, but I, I know she called it that, but we did buy clocks.
We don't, yeah.
So, look, we're gonna speculate, so let's just.
Yeah.
Till we find, we write them.
What is it? Yeah.
And then computers, there is two listed for seven thousand. Actually, things may be high.
Hmm, it is high. I got them for.
Yeah, we could check that number.
Check that. I have no problem getting them that we need, but just wanna make sure that we're not opening things that we need. Um, folding, last stuff machine, I guess that's a mill machine.
Yeah, I guess.
Uh, to be determined.
Yes.
Um, windows plumbing, not sure why that's there, if you don't allow it.
That's our windows and the plumbing downstairs. Remember how we froze? Perhaps that's why.
That's more like a repair though, yeah. Well, okay, the plumbing, maybe it's insulated, I guess.
Right, and our windows are.
Uh, we need to break out these numbers, because.
Our windows?
They're not fine.
Yeah, they're very thin. They're not double insulated.
Yeah, they were thin when the building was tall.
The amount of money that that building has cost is one of the worst investments ever. I'm not going.
Inflated glass, lemonade inflated glass costs a bunch.
Or better glass. It doesn't, I mean, our glass is very, very thin.
Well, that, that's definitely.
So, you want this, you want this broken down?
I think we should break it.
I think we need to understand what it is that they're even saying they wanna buy, that's a lot of money.
Um, so, going down to DPW, roads with curves, the number four hundred thousand is there. Catherine, they, they talked to us on Friday about this. We have a grant of two hundred twelve thousand. She was checking to see if it offsets the four hundred.
I think that's separate money. That's what Mark proposed to the streets, which are on the back.
With the last cover?
Correct. In the back?
Yeah.
There? See on the back. And I know Mark, in his presentation, was explaining, waiting to hear from Engelwood at the summit, is separated to two sides. Engelwood's.
So, what he was saying is that four hundred thousand is what remains after the grant.
That was my understanding.
And he actually provided, like, four sixty, I don't know what that number down here, on Friday. Uh, I guess, you know what, when you guys watched that video, let me know what Mark said. Thanks. Road signs, ten thousand, um.
That's the retaining.
Uh, we, we may not be able to do this, uh, DPW article this year, most likely not.
We should talk to Andy and just, get a better understanding of what that is.
Make sure there's not, uh, safety hazard.
Exactly.
Salt shed, uh, if possible, I prefer not doing that, many thousand dollars. Home station, that's, I think, is important.
That's necessary, yeah.
Regarding the, uh, salt shed, uh, I can go over and take a look there, like you said, they got written up a couple times.
Yeah, see it.
So, uh, just figure out, I'm sure there's other solutions that sort of replace the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
And also, there was a discussion on, does it really need a door? I mean, I know that.
I know, and a door is gonna be cheaper than a thousand.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, I don't, they didn't, yeah, I don't know whether you really need a door.
Door and a burn.
Doesn't it have, um?
Plastic thing is fine, this one.
Yeah, I can check it out.
All right. Unfortunately, I have to move, um, I will look at the rest of the video later, but I have to take my kit somewhere. Um, so. Okay. So, we've got as much done.
Councilwoman Park is leaving at six twenty.
April six, did you, did she give back to about April six?
No, I will not be here.
Find out, I guess, the other time.
Okay. Second and third.
No, we're not.
Okay.
That's a special night, next Friday. Are you good with that, Ellen?
Uh, next Friday?
Yeah, April six.
Do.
What time?
Chloe did.
Six-thirty or whatever works. Um, it should be okay, but I experienced that check.
Can you, can you?
You could bring that.
No.
Well, no, it's more about that.
Do you wanna take another budget meeting before Ellen?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that, yeah, I'm supposed to. April, can you please, like, calendar that?
April six?
Yeah, that's a definite.
That's definite.
That's a definite, okay.
April sixth, six-thirty.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And, uh, you wanna get her?
You, thirty seconds.
Okay.
Do you want another budget meeting next week or the following week?
Well, if we do it when the fire chief and the chief are available.
Okay.
So, count on that first, and then circulated three?
Okay, they have the mandatory.
April sixth, six-thirty.
Chloe, you, you already committed to that, right?
Yes, she did.
April sixth. Ed?
Are you ready?
I was up today, that's good.
Okay, can you, can you?
Should be fine.
Okay, can you cal, can you calendar it right now? It was that we'll be advertising on Monday.
April sixth, correct?
April sixth. Is the six-thirty okay for everybody? Is that okay? Six-thirty?
Six.
Yeah, yeah, okay, fine.
It's Friday, April sixth, I said thirty.
So, I'm gonna send out the, I don't know exactly the way I did it.
You said you were sure it was the workout.
Just make sure. Make a change, just.
No, because, uh, I'll.
So, how is that the, uh, home station for Lindgren and Chestnut? That's forty-five thousand dollars. That's important, that we should do. Just start to, senior building repairs, uh, ten thousand dollars and.
Part, um, but I guess.
I need a new shed.
Yeah, it, it was all eight years.
Bless you.
Thank you.
I know that.
DPW has various vehicles to be determined.
And that's his wish list. This, this is not, yeah, yeah.
Um, I hope that he mentioned, we actually.
There was one.
He's got forty-five thousand.
Utility body truck.
Yeah, forty-five thousand dollars.
That, he rated it a number two out of his wish list. It wasn't a number one.
Is that what it is, the numbers, um, on this?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the order of his wish.
If you look up in the, uh, top line, and go across the middle of the priority.
But, I mean, he's got two number one.
He's got two priorities.
Yeah.
Their priorities are, they're, they're, my, sequential. Call it, well.
Like that wasn't a, yeah.
So, that was like a storage building, he was asking, so, it's a two priority, I don't think it's gonna happen. So, then, um, for public property, uh, we got studies and improvements. I'm not sure which ones are the ones that.
I don't know.
Name of.
I know the Persian plant, the Persian road, we know what that's about.
We know what that's about. Fifth Street Engineering Design, a hundred forty thousand.
Bless you.
Next question. Uh, Fifth Street, we're gonna get determined, Fifth Street structure to be determined. That is the, uh, lundown of the capital budget, the initial lundown. We're gonna get more to detail, dive into it more, and other details of the budget. Uh, Mark, you're sending me, you know, um, Fifth Street, we see it, we're okay with it.
Okay, can you forward that to me, I did, can you check? Okay, can you forward that, can you, I did reach out to Andy, and he said he was taking care of that right now.
I just want, if we're gonna patch the hole, let's try to make sure, um, our council buys us what our potential liability is if we catch that one. I don't, uh, do something, and then I'll.
And so we will wait to hear from you if the power of council is funded, three thirty already. Tomorrow, we're closed, right? Gotcha, okay, so.
So I'll forward that and go to our attorney.
So.
When the motion is coming.
So basically, you want the chief, the two chiefs, and do you want the CFO here at the same night?
I think so, you can get two of them. If, if the CFO can't make it, and it's the two chiefs who make it.
That's fine.
All right, uh, so thank you for working through that despite the, uh, fireworks early on. Gloria, it's not so bad being a financial chair, and I'm doing it for you. Have a motion to close.
Pass it.
Thank you.
All right, babe.
Zach, do you have an extra capital worksheet for Ed?